Ready to go.
So, good evening and welcome to the September 29th meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee to discuss the fiscal year 2024 budget is the main item that we have. Nancy is not available tonight, but Janet and I think we can make our way through the meeting okay. Bob, you okay with just two of us? We're gonna be tough on you tonight.
It is what it is.
Okay, so take it away. You're on.
Well, I'm just gonna hit some of the highlights for the Highway Department budget. Most of the increases this year, obviously, were due to mostly fuel prices. Everything has increased over time here, it seems. The equipment repairs, we're starting to see a little less in the breakdowns, but the expense for most of that is due to the increase in what it costs to get parts. I think one of the things I put in there is as simple as an oil filter, what they cost now. It's ridiculous, but it is what it is. The obvious is the fuel prices. That line item, I'm sure everybody saw a pretty good increase there. I'm hoping that's gonna be sufficient. Oil also has increased, as well as anything made with classics, which is unfortunately our culverts. I'm looking to purchase a new truck. The new truck would replace one of the old ones, obviously. And I think I showed some of the Budget Committee members. Over time, the holes start getting oblonged on the plows. They get worn out. Even the plow itself gets worn out. We have had instances before where I've had them actually fall off. I've had a wing fall off the truck before because the pinholes get enlarged. It is something that can be repaired, but the list would go on and on. To just keep throwing money at an old truck just doesn't make sense to me. The transfer station, we had an issue there with the tractor. Maintenance over there was pretty heavy this year. But the biggest thing was I was having troubles with the trash trailers because they... Well, basically, we couldn't get the new one. We went almost two years. And finally, what I ended up doing, because we couldn't get aluminum, was I moved on and said enough is enough, and I just got a steel trailer, which I hated to do, but I had no choice. I'm putting in for a new one for the transfer station again because I'm looking at it. If it takes two years, we're gonna be in trouble because the oldest trailer is 18 years old at this point. Let's see, I was just gonna touch base. One of the things I had in here also was a sewer bond. We are second in line with a grant through the state for a low interest rate. I think I had that listed in there, so you guys can see that. Basically, George's Mills Generator, Main Plant, and Edmunds Road. The concerns I have is George's Mills, you have Lake Sunapee right there. If that generator goes down, it's a risk, a high risk. If the Main Plant goes down, then we got Lion Brook, and we could be faced with Keyser Lake all over again. And then same with Edmunds, that's also along Lion Brook. These generators, let's see, the Main Plant generator was actually installed in 1979, George's Mills Generator, 1980. Edmunds, I'm not sure on. That one's just got a lot of problems with locating parts for it at this point. I'm just kind of breezing through this because I know there's a lot to talk about on this. One thing I've been looking into is an asset management plan for buildings and facilities. And we had a webinar, I had Phil Sherman in on it, just for his expertise. He asked the right questions. He knows a little bit more about them than I do. I've had a second webinar, which I'm looking at more than one, so it's kind of hard to find any. But we got one more scheduled for next week to talk to them. And I didn't put a memo in here, but I've been told that it might be worth it to put a placeholder for that, looking forward. The one I was looking at, so far, the first one was actually had pretty good potential. But we're looking at a placeholder of maybe 30,000 to see if we can maybe do something with that. The program would actually assist in making work orders. It would track, hopefully, what I'm looking for anyway, is it would track, like if you had a boiler that you were putting a lot of money into or a piece of equipment, you'd be able to get a report on that particular item and make a decision as to whether it's maybe it's time that we start looking to replace it, similar to the asset management plan that we have for storm water and wastewater. Does anybody have any questions?
So Janet, you wanna... I think the best way to proceed, Bob, is to go through the pages of the budget.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what we did last week. And we'll continue and sort of see what comes up on particular line items here. So Budget Committee people, we're starting on page five, the general government buildings. And Janet, do you wanna jump in here?
Yeah, Bob, on the maintenance and repair, refresh my memory, what do we spend? I mean, I noticed that we spent $36,361 in '22, and now you're only requesting $10,000. What happened in '22?
That's on which building?
It's 430, the second, on general government buildings, on page five.
It's Whipple.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Whipple Hall. Well, a lot of it had to do with this audio/video going in. We had to make changes with electric.
Oh, okay.
I think also we had a study done, plus these panels. I mean, there was a lot of different things going in, the shades. I don't know if that all come out of that.
Okay.
Phil, maybe you can help us here. Prior to this year, were we doing a lot of the repairs in this building through operating budget as opposed to... Because we didn't have the bond at that point.
Yeah, well...
Phil, I hate to do this to you, but because we're recording this, we've got to ask you to come up to the mic and identify yourself.
Phil Sherman. I'm not aware of the funding source for the previous work, but none of that is from the bond, the 600,000. This was all prior to that. There was a fraction of the sound system, it involved fire alarm and involved some electrical, as Bob said, that I think came out of...
Lighting, yeah.
Was there some lighting in there too? Yeah. So some of that may have come out of the immediate town funds. I don't know how much of it came out of reserves, if any.
I'm not sure, but the... Didn't we have LED upgrades too on that end?
I wasn't part of that. It may have.
Lynn, do you have any knowledge of...
Any of the AV equipment did not come out of this line item.
AV equipment did not?
Did not.
But there was some town, town-instated support stuff for that, some fire alarm that had to move around, exit signs that moved, things like that, that was not through that Star Sound contract.
Right. Capital alarm was through, was not through this. I think it was like $2,500 for...
Okay.
That was not through this. Some of the other stuff, I'm not sure if that... It was some, there's the bigger ticket items that was...
Was that Irish Electric, Bob?
What's that?
Was that Irish Electric that did the...
Irish Electric. I know they did, we did some pretty extensive wiring through here. We had to do these strobes for the alarm system. I believe to get power to here, we had to change everything over.
Right.
And there was also a light. We put a switch in over here to get a light because Adam was complaining. I guess some of the meetings, they'd shut the lights off here and had no control, so they'd be trying to get on the stairs in the dark. But I can find out, I can ask him on that to double check.
I think that would be helpful, and I think that then the question would be, given that much of what's happening now is going to be paid through the bond, and this is going to be a difficult year, do we really need to have even the $10,000 for Whipple in the '24 budget?
That was my...
I can run a report to hit that line item.
Okay.
Not right now, but I can get that.
Well, it does seem like we've spent a lot of money and we still have things to do, but the bond's gonna cover those. So do we need that $10,000 in there? I guess that would be... I agree, Phil. Can I ask for more?
Keep going.
Okay. With regard to the Academy Building, what did we spend almost $13,000 in '22 on? Do you know what that was for?
Which one was that again?
And then actually, in '23, it was $8,000, at the bottom of the page, page five on the Academy Building. And why you're asking for...
Okay, on that, the bulk of that was because the transfer switch at the... I mean, there was also upgrades. We had, and actually, some of the money, now that I think of it too, was because we had that Labor Board inspection here too and here. Between the PD and here, we had to correct some issues. So some money on that also got spent here. But all the buildings, we had to go through after the Labor Board and do upgrades. You know, it might have been as simple as we discovered some of the exit signs, the battery backup wasn't working, so to be in compliance, we repaired those. And I know the transfer switch was probably the biggest bill down there. That was a huge expense. I think that was well over six grand to repair that.
Okay, well, what do you anticipate for the next fiscal year that we would need $10,500 for it?
What I'm looking at is the increase in what it costs now for building supplies and any, if we have Irish Electric come in, their rates have gone up. We're finding across the board that everything's been increasing little by little.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm good.
Anything else on the buildings there?
No, not there.
Budget Committee members, anything you wanna raise with Bob about the buildings?
Some of this too. I took kind of a three-year average, just to try to keep it in sync.
Okay. So the buildings continue over on page six, all the way down through the Fire Department, the Highway Department Garage, Transfer Station, Elkins Beach, Buckland Beach. Any questions there? Janet and I were talking after the sewer meeting that we just had, and we were reflecting on the fact that the town clock, for your benefit, we voted in an earlier meeting to support the maintenance, some repairs to that clock, and the order, I think, $6,800. That's not reflected anywhere here. It will be spent on FY '23 time period, but we hope to totally offset that with donations, which will show up in the revenue side. But there will show up inevitably a big number for clock maintenance that you'll see at some point. Anybody else? Colin over there? Make sure I don't miss hands through the... Okay, if there's nothing more on general government buildings, let's move to cemeteries on page seven. Janet, do you have any questions about cemeteries?
I didn't, no.
You can call me Bill if you want. I'll call you Lou, how's that?
That's awesome.
You have to go up to the mic, though.
Okay. To be, you know, completely realistic, the, I'm looking here, the average electric rate in New Hampshire is supposed to be increasing 75 to 80% this coming year. I wonder if we are gonna be subject to that? I think we are, but if so, if we are budgeting the electrical increases appropriately.
We are not subject to that increase.
Pardon?
We're not subject to that increase. We're part of a cooperative that...
Oh, beautiful.
...give anything to it. But we're not getting hit the way...
Normal...
...Residential is getting hit.
Then my question is answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so moving on then to page 11, which is the Highway Department.
Did we review cemeteries? Did we review cemeteries?
Pardon? Go ahead. Here, go to the left.
Did we review cemeteries?
There were no, I didn't hear any questions. Did you have a question?
No.
I'm sorry. I went quickly because I didn't hear anybody speak. So on to page 11 in the Highway Department, Highway Administration is the first piece. Again, Janet, do you wanna, anything there?
I don't, I didn't have anything that stood out to me.
Okay. Anybody in the Budget Committee have anything in Highway Administration, Highway Department Administration that they stood out, they want to ask questions about? How about Highway and Streets, continuing from on page 11 on to 12? I did have a question, Bob, about on the top of page 12, upgrading dirt roads. It looks like we've had $10,000 in the budget for a long period of time and have managed to not spend any money there since FY '20. Is that something we need to continue if we're looking for money this year?
Actually, I'm gonna have to look back on that because I did submit a bill for... Actually, I don't think it went through that. It ended up going through gravel roads, I mean gravel. But that one there, I know the last two years, the maintenance has been, the maintenance line, which, if I can find it, maintenance and repair has been on the high side. So every time that's been high, I've been trying to take care of that stuff in-house without going over.
Which line are you on, I'm sorry?
What's that?
630.
630? That's maintenance and repair supplies, right?
Equipment, repair, and maintenance.
Yep. So you've been increasing that?
Yeah, this time we increased it, but this past year, I went over again because of parts and labor and the increases, if you can see, in 2022, it was at 85 that I actually spent.
Yep. I was back still on 382, though, the question about upgrading dirt roads, which looks like an account that hasn't been used in three years. And if the costs of whatever you're doing there and your commentary and so on is ending up in another account, maybe this is one we could save some budget money on as we're trying to trim things down, because it doesn't look like it's an active account, actually.
Normally, I would use it, but like I said, where I overspent, I tried to not spend a few of the line items, just to hold back, to make sure that I had funds to cover. That's pretty much what I was doing there.
Okay. But I think, I don't know what you think, Janet, but I think that's an area that we might look to trim down if we're trying to be, save some money.
Yeah, I think, Bob, I'd rather see you have an accurate estimate of whatever it is you need, on the other line items, rather than putting in something that you haven't been using. Because certainly, it looks like we, since we haven't been using the $10,000, it would be a good place to remove that.
Budget Committee, any questions about Highway and Streets other than the one that Janet and I are raising? Sorry you have to walk up there because of the recording.
I'm Melissa Lince. I want to just clarify what Bob is saying. He's not using the $10,000 in the upgrade dirt road. He's actually used it in the equipment repair and maintenance area.
That's what I heard.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Melissa.
I don't think that's what you're saying. I don't think that's what...
Others?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Bob, do you just want to comment on the increases on sand and salt prices?
Salt prices?
It looked like they've been pretty flat for several years, and now you're going up.
Yes, the prices went up. I've got the three prices that we normally get, and it's about a $20 a ton increase on one, and then the other one, I think the cheapest one is down right around $12 that it went up a ton. And not knowing what Mother Nature's gonna throw my way, I'm just concerned that with the increase, that we're getting close to that level where I won't have it to maintain the roads this winter.
On the other hand, in all of the actual data that we have for the last three years, you've never spent what you budgeted. And so I guess that...
Yeah, that's one of those, that's one of those lines, though, that I have no...
All right, I understand.
I have no idea what I'm gonna use, similar to fuel and sand. Some years, we go over on sand, and I haven't yet on salt.
But those of us that can see the last three years here, see that you haven't gone over in three years. You've been substantially under in '20, '21, and '22 on sand.
Keep in mind that, I mean, last year, it was at 18. I spent $18,500 on salt. At today's prices, probably a couple, well, it'd probably be about 20 ton. Just one load coming in would probably bring me real close to that 25.
But I'm sure that, you know, as we're all are looking at this and trying to see where we can...
Yep.
...sharpen our pencil a bit, the fact that we've been below the budget for three years is sort of raises at least my antennae to take a closer look at that. Janet, anything on you?
Yeah, Bob, I wonder about the calcium chloride. Are you not using it? I've seen, I mean...
No, what happened this year was, last year, I didn't use it because I needed the money to offset the over expenditures on the maintenance line, along with the gravel, as you can see the amount. I had enough to get by. I was gonna have them come back in and restock because we have none now, which will have to come out of this budget.
This budget, right.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, Budget Committee members, anything you want to raise more on Highway and Streets besides Melissa's question? Where's everybody tonight? Okay, so hearing none, we'll move on to street lighting, which is also on page 12, a single item, about two-thirds of the way down. Looks like that's been pretty standard, close to either a little under or over what you've been asking for, so I don't say anything there to you, Janet. Anybody on the Budget Committee want to address street lighting on page 12? Hearing none, we'll move on to the transfer station, which starts at the bottom of page Bob's talked about a couple of the capital items, but this is the operating items. You're actually reducing the proposed total amount here, which...
I guess I'd wonder, why is health and dental going down, the insurance, on the top of page 13? That's Lynn's question.
That's probably a turnover of an employee...
Is it?
...who went from a family plan to a...
We did, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Went from a family to a two-person.
Okay.
And that doesn't have our increases in it yet.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's why.
Yeah, reminder to the Budget Committee that none of these health and dental numbers in here have the increased costs in the plan, so any change relates to an employee changing the plan, as Lynn just explained.
When are the rates for the VNIS?
We will have our not-to-exceed rate. They, the board meets next, the end of next week, so we'll have it the following week, and then we get our actual rates sometime in March.
We will not have the actual rates when we set the budget. We will...
Right, but we have promised not to exceed.
Put in not-to-exceed numbers.
Sorry, listen up, street lighting.
Back to street lighting, go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, I missed my question.
Identify yourself for the video, please.
Chris Lorio. Bob, for street lighting, have we, are we fully LED in town, or do we still have incandescent bulbs around for street lighting, like on bunker and other areas?
As far as the, excuse me, as far as the town streetlights are all LED.
Okay. Okay, so no really upgrades?
I know, I, out on Bill's Road, I had somebody approach me about that light, about it being LED.
Okay, great.
The town portion is.
I don't, that light costs the neighborhood $18 a month, so I don't think it's gonna make a big difference. So other than the, obviously, wage increases and the issue here that we can't account for yet, it's just a change in turnover of employees, so...
Okay.
Anybody else on the transfer station? Pretty straightforward?
I got a question.
Oh, sure. Colin, come on.
Colin Beasley. Down in your equipment line, repair and maintenance, the 430 line item, so you, obviously, your maintenance costs are exceeding your budgets over the last couple of years. Is that the equipment you're referring to as far as needing the trailers?
Yes.
So do we have philosophy of reserves for the transfer station and its equipment? Do you know? We do?
For the, for the replacement of the trailer?
Yeah?
Yes.
And for all the other equipment? Because I know you've had a lot of maintenance issues done, so...
The tractor was purchased not too long ago. We bought that used. That was before I come on board.
Yeah.
And from what I've, I've had them go through it at the international dealership, and they're saying it's actually in pretty decent shape. We did have a breakdown or two with it this year, but part of that, I think I would blame on the fact that we actually had to haul to Berlin. The gentleman that we had hauling last year, he had some medical issues and was unable to do it, so that put a little bit more wear and tear on our vehicle, which ended up, you know, causing breakdowns, obviously, because it's used a lot more. But the bulk of that was pretty much the trailers, the two over there. One of them, I had to replace a bunch of the hydraulics underneath, and we had to have welding repairs done as well, which regardless whether they're steel or aluminum, you're still gonna have repairs like that that have to be done, just from going over these very smooth roads in the winter.
So when you priced out, obviously, 20, excuse me, it's very loud, '21 and '22, the maintenance costs were far exceeding your budget. When you did your three-year average, did you use your actuals or your, because your budget items in '23 and '24 are two to three times the budget items in the other years?
I'm sorry.
So if you take a look at the line item, right, your budget item in 2020 was 2,500, the actual was 70,000, I'm rounding, budget item is 3,000, the actual is 18,000, 4,040, and then you've got a 9,500 this year and a 10,000 next year. So if the equipment's being replaced, is that budget item for maintenance needing to be as high as it is? How did you come up with that number?
What I did is I looked across what we're spending and took into consideration as far as we just received our new trailer. So the 18-year-old one isn't getting used as much, so I'm hoping that if this goes through with another trailer, it'll bring stuff back down to a more realistic number with less breakdowns.
Okay.
That's the plan I have. But having that new trailer onboard now has been a blessing because we're not using that 18-year-old trailer as much.
Okay.
It's still in the mix, but not running every day.
Got it. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
I think, Colin, in the broader question that you asked, the town vehicle and equipment repair capital account was stopped being funded several years ago, and the Selectmen asked that repairs, vehicle repair, be put in the operating budget.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not doing capital reserves now for repairs and maintenance. I think it's still a carryover balance. I don't know why it's still there. It's still a carryover balance, I don't know why it's still there actually, of well over $19,000.
We do capital reserves for equipment that might replace highly, highly maintained equipment.
Yes.
That's what I was getting.
But not for repairs and maintenance.
Okay.
And actually Lynn, we ought to put on the list about why we're keeping that small balance alive in that.
Jay has something.
In that count, no, maybe it's for Jay.
Jason Lyon.
Uh, the reason why we're, uh, we stopped funding that is we got up to an amount of $36,000. We were putting $12,000 a year in for several years, uh, in an effort to make sure that there were sufficient funds. Once we reached that amount, um, the determination was to not fund that. That was specifically designed for the fire department, so that if we had a catastrophic breakdown when it comes to one of our pumps, our ladders, whatever the case is, each one of those things is anywhere from nine to $18,000, depending on what the, what the situation was. What we ended up doing was expanding that, not just to the fire department, but other departments, so that if the BT, DPW, the police department, one of the other departments had an issue, they could tap into those funds, so it wasn't specifically for the fire department. So we did use some of those funds, um, and I would have to go back to find out what we looked at. I think we had a, a generator issue on our engine two that was right around $11,000. Uh, and then there was another department that ended up tapping into that, that $36,000 fund.
16, 16,000 something for the transfer station when the Ram went, I think, kind of that as well.
Yeah. Thank you for that historical reminder, yep. Okay, anything else on the transfer station? Seeing none, we will move on to solid waste cleanup, which is also on page 13. Two line items there. Janet, anything?
That will last forever. Never stop.
The, the monitoring of the landfill.
That's right, yeah. State's never going to sign off on that.
Nope. And, um, again, I think what you're assuming, Bob, the small increase in the, uh, uh, waste drives is simply reality of what probably is going to happen in the, like everything else. We didn't have one this year, right? Oh, we did, we had.
We did, yeah.
We did, hospital days, right?
Yeah. Not a fun day.
Um, and whatever the expenditures were for that haven't gone through the accounts yet, so.
Yeah, that, they've already been told, let's try to reschedule that to a different day, because that, that was a interesting day.
Any questions about, um, solid waste cleanup total? Two items, the landfill and the drives? Okay, moving on to sewer buildings on page 19. We're down at the bottom of page 19. Going over to top of page 20 where the total is. Minimal, less than $1,000 in total. Chris, you've got the big ones tonight.
I do, right? Uh, so for computer support, I don't know, because I've seen it, obviously it's in different lines and in different departments. Do we have an overall view of how much computer support's going up tot- in totality through all departments?
Oh, you're back in, you're back in the.
I'm on page 20, sorry.
Yep, I'm sorry, okay, you're.
Did I just know, I mean, I don't know if that's like new laptops, or if it's just support for that line item?
I can give you that detail, I don't have it.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, just something to think about?
Yeah, no, our, our computer company gave us this nice, big, complicated spreadsheet, but it does talk about how much it's going up and, and different equipment.
Okay, because it's cut across multiple line items?
Right, but we're not, we're not intending to replace any big equipment?
So is it just pricing?
You're in the, you're in the capital reserve account at the top of page 20, aren't you?
I am.
No, he's looking at the.
Where, where?
343 and 340.
In the middle of, yeah.
343. So it went up 38%, which, I mean, it's only, you know, 20, well, actually less, like $1,500, $1,600, but it just seemed like in looking at other line items, computer support is up as well, across different departments. So it was more of just a question, maybe for this, to, to see overall and what the reasons are.
Probably, that just came up last week too Lynn, so maybe a, a sheet that shows the total and then which.
I can.
All the departments.
The percentages, how I break it out.
Rather than us having to go through and finding it, that'd be really, really helpful, thank you. Anything else on sewer buildings? Yep, Janet?
Sewer equipment, maintenance, and repair, uh, line 430. Why, why is it so high?
On?
Seventy, what's the $75,000 for, on page 20?
Oh, we're, we're still on 19.
Oh, I moved on to 20. Sorry.
Where the.
There wasn't anything else.
General government buildings, okay. Anybody else on that one? Okay, let's move on now to collection and disposal. Go Janet.
Okay. So, line 430, sewer equipment, maintenance, and repair, why is it so high?
Why is that amount so high?
Yeah.
Well, it, it costs about, if you have to replace or actually rebuild one pump, it, it'll run you right around 40,000 to 50,000.
So, you think that's, I mean, that's, you've looked at the equipment and you feel that it has a shelf life of X amount, and you're anticipating that things are going to fail?
Again, we do preventative maintenance. They can look at them by the hours that they run.
Mm-hmm.
And they can see the gallons that flow through it, and if the hours are a lot more, you know, if there's a lot more runtime, I guess, then there's concern that there's possibly a problem with the pump. Sometimes seals go, and we have no way of telling.
Mm-hmm, okay.
They just go, and then, I know one year we had, before I took over, there was a spare pump down at the sewer plant, we had a pump go, so we said, this is great, we got a spare pump. We grabbed it. Unbeknownst to us, that the, the seals were gone on the one that we were putting in. Uh, they, they were supposed to have rebuilt the whole thing, and evidently the company that did it didn't do it correctly, so we had two pumps. That was a big bill that year. I think we ended up spending, by the time we got done with labor and swapping out all the pumps and getting them fixed, it was about $120,000. It's one of those things that you just, you can't anticipate other than looking at runtime.
Okay.
You know, basically that's what the asset management plan is for, it kind of helps us with that as best it can. It's definitely a good tool. But as we're, where we're standing right now is we have a spare pump, 100% ready to go for both George's Mills High Pine, and I believe we also, George's Mills High Pine, and I think the pump at High Pine can be used at Edmunds Road as well. And then we also have a pump for the main station, so we do have backup in place, so if one goes down, it should just be one pump, you get a repair.
Okay.
That's what we're hoping.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other, anything else for us? Anybody else for anything else on sewer? Colin?
Colin Beasley. Bob, the very last item under sewer, collection and disposal, expenses to Sunape?
Yep.
Could you just shed some light on how that works? So in 2020, uh, our cost was 459,000. In 2021, our costs were 437,000. 2022, it dropped down to 301,000. And we're going to budget 540,000 this year. So can you help the team understand what other variables there and why we want to budget something that high?
Go ahead Lynn.
Actually, I can, I can do that. So that's what we are billed from Sunape, we're sending our waste to them.
Right.
Um, the only reason I think it went down in 2022 is maybe a timing issue on one of the bills that I had gotten. But they set the rate, they set the percentage based on our flow rate. So it's, that actual number may, I may be able to adjust that number, we were just talking about their, their budget, they haven't finalized their budget yet.
So when did they set the rate?
We set the rate earlier this evening on the flow.
Right.
And the current billing rate is $70.53, and it's going down to 66.47. So I think that's part of what Lynn is saying, that based on the meeting we just had with the sewer people, but their budget, you know, their personnel and all their equipment, all the things we've been talking about, has not been settled at all, so, and that will not be done until November.
Right. So the flow rate's going down, but the budget.
Flow rate's going down.
Right.
So we should have a better number, probably a lower number, um, going into, um, the final rounds of the budget here, because we did, the flow rate's going down.
Kim and I used, we actually, um, level funded it just to have a placeholder.
Yep, yep.
But hopefully it will go down a little bit.
Which just raises another question, and we don't need to answer it today, but if you were to take a step back and, and ask the question, how many placeholders we have in this budget? It would be kind of interesting, I'm, I'm going to make up the extreme, right, if 60% of it is a placeholder, you know, for us to think through what it means to the budget process would be interesting, right? If a small percent is a placeholder, it's a whole different conversation.
There, there's a few, unless you're talking, um, wages and insurances that I've done my best to estimate.
Right.
But I don't think there's a ton of large placeholders like this one.
Okay.
Yeah, with two-thirds of the, um, budget being personnel costs, Colin, um, you know, the big placeholder is what are we going to do with wages? So, and that, the, the selectman will take a position on that before we pass the budget on to the budget committee. But I think this is the only really big one. It's a placeholder other than wages.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, it's a placeholder, but it's, we did what we, we didn't, we didn't expect anything to go down significantly with it, so we're not, you know, we didn't shoot for the stock.
I'd like to add also that, um, I don't know if that had any impact on that, but that I think was the same year we replaced that, we did the slip lining on the pipe that had infiltration issues.
Hmm.
On Barrett Road, so that would have changed the flow to Sunape. Yeah, and also we found another one this year, they just did two. We fixed it in-house.
Yeah, we're, we're assuming that when we get the monthly data for the next 12 months, that'll improved even further, so, because of the work that you've done.
I'm hoping, so if the rates come down, and then this shows up, we'll, we'll be looking good, right?
That's right, yep. One, one positive thing, so. Other questions about, um, about sewer? The, uh, capital items that Bob referred to, we'll, we'll get back to when we do the capital reserves in a few more weeks, so, uh, we won't, aren't going to get into that tonight. Capital reserve items, the trailer, the truck, bond, those all come on another night. Budget committee, comments, questions, further clarifications that you'd like from Bob? Okay, hearing none, then I think we can conclude the budget part of our discussion for this evening. Sure, okay. So, um, committee meetings and reports, Janet? Thank you all.
The planning board met on Tuesday night, September 27th, and we had a public hearing regarding the final site plan review and subdivision for the plan unit development behind the New London Hospital. We did not give approval, we continued it till October 11th, as there were several suggestions made by abutters with regard to lighting and egress from the hospital and the express care. So, once the plans are changed to reflect what we agreed upon, um, we will decide on October 11th, and one way or another, give them approval or not. Also, we heard from Russ Moore and the New London Bike Walk Group, and, um, had questions about adding bike routes and that sort of thing, and, um, more bike racks, and we indicated to him, and the two people that were with him, that we, at this point, we do not have money in the budget for bike racks. And we didn't propose doing that because of, um, we've got enough things that we feel are going to go up, and I think they understood that. We talked about, uh, we had, we didn't review it, but we looked at some zoning amendments that we are possibly going to propose for, um, town meeting, and did not finalize the capital improvement program, and we just received the recommendations from that group. So, um, we will go through that on October 11th, and that's it.
Okay, any, Buick Committee hasn't met yet, right?
No.
Waste Reduction Committee met again, um, and went as, went ahead and approved a 15 household trial plan for composting, um, with Bob's help, and, um, that'll be discussed again at the Citizens Committee meeting on Saturday morning. It's planned to run for some three months, there's been, uh, some publicity on the town website, there's an article in the, um, Intertown today, and so on, so this is an attempt to, um, begin to see if we can create a composting culture here in, um, in New London. That's all I have, and, um, minutes, I don't think we've gotten the September 8th minutes yet, so we don't need to worry about those tonight. The usual upcoming meetings, uh, next full selectmen's meeting is October 6th, meeting with the budget committee starting at 6:30 that night, we're going to be doing public safety budgets. Buick Committee is meeting tomorrow, Waste Reduction Committee is meeting tomorrow, Citizens Committee Saturday morning at 7:30, and their agenda is a combination of, um, composting and energy. Whipple Hall Committee is meeting again on the 11th, and the Planning Board on the 11th, as Janet said, so that's the meeting lineup at this point. Any other business anybody would like to bring forward tonight? Hearing none, do we have anything to sign, Lynn? Do we have any vouchers to sign or anything?
I didn't grab them, I'm sorry.
Nothing? So, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, who?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.